Being that we have no presentations and not that many things on the agenda, I'll just say for clarity, we'll start at 4:10. We'll still be able to get through things and be done by 4:30. We'll call the rule in two minutes. At this time, I will call the Budget, Finance, and Governance Committee to order and ask the clerk to please call the rule.
Councilmember Gruber.
Here.
Councilmember Martin.
Here.
Councilmember Monroe.
Here.
Vice President Harris.
Here.
President Melendez.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you for the whole Finance Committee for being here despite the weather. Thank you to, I know this is not DES Day, but DES for helping to keep the roads as clear and safe as possible today. We actually have no presentations today, although we do have probably some extended conversation based on the memo that everyone has on their desk, or memo might not be the right word, but the Attachment A to 474 that OMB created. So we can talk about that when we get there, but we'll jump right into the Legislative Business with introductory number 473, authorizing an agreement for state lobbying services. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Councilmember Martin.
Yes, could you provide more insight or describe the workflow on how the lobbying firm provides services to the city? I saw the list of priorities that were, I guess, one, but just, I'm trying to understand like how it works. What's the communication like? Like what specific services are they providing and how often, things like that?
So I am the point of contact with them. We speak at least once or twice a week on different issues, especially when the legislature is in session. The workflow is basically if the legislators are in session, if there is anything that the city might have a stake in, we contact the lobbyist or the lobbyist contacts us. Recently, the governor signed a few pieces of legislation, so they alerted us that it might have an impact on the city. So it's an informal process, except for the fact that we also have regular check-ins to discuss anything that may be coming down the pipeline.
That's helpful. Thank you. I have a few more questions. So I saw the joint state request list based on the administration's priorities and the county's priorities. Is the county also paying a portion for the service, or do they have someone else lobbying for their interests?
The county has their own lobbying.
Okay, so the commonality is just like you, the county and the city agree. Is there a way that council's state priority list can be included in the upcoming year? Because there are some bills I think we may be interested in, like milk as it's associated with childhood poverty or the gate money bill. So is there a way to?
Most of, a lot of that is already included, but if there are things that come up that council are interested in or things that might come up, they definitely should let us know.
Okay.
And we could have further conversations about that. But things come up from time to time. A prime example is the, some of you may remember the casino thing came up, and that was something that all administration and council had an interest in. And if we did not have a lobbying firm, we would end up having a casino here. So
Yeah.
Those types of opportunities come up from time to time for us to be able to collaborate on stuff together. But yeah.
That's helpful. And last question, was, how much was allocated last in this fiscal year? I know we're asking for 150,000 now, but is it the same? Are there any changes?
Is it, it's the same amount, yeah.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, and just a point of clarity, Councilmember Martin, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, Mayor and Tammy, but the work with the lobbyists, the document that was worked on with the county is about our lobbying requests for specific capital needs, as opposed to the idea of like signing on to a bill, which we would do through, I think which is what you were referencing, which we would do through like a memorializing resolution.
Yeah, and a lot of this, I'll be honest too, is about M-O-N-E-Y, money. So like your joint requests are dollars that we're really trying to seek more so than specific bills.
Yeah. So the bills I mentioned also have funds attached to them that would be allocated to people in the community. So
Yeah.
There's a financial aspect to, not just legal changes, but some of the bills, I think some of us are interested in have the financial component. So I'd be interested in maybe like a formula we can use to communicate to the administration what we're interested in and see that also reflected.
Yep, and we're also able to communicate where bills that we might be supportive of, where they are too in that process.
Amazing.
Whether in the first house or second house, are they on the governor's desk to be signed? So that's why the lobbyist is very helpful for us to have somebody underground.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Any further questions on 473? If not, I'll take a motion.
Move it.
It's been moved.
Second.
Seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Let the record also show we've been joined by councilmembers Patterson and Lightfoot. We are just at the beginning of the packet. We're starting now, right now at introductory number 474, and I would just direct people's attention to the memo on their desk, Attachment A. The next three items are all related to some significant changes in terms of some HR, time and attendance infrastructure that we're buying. And I asked OMB specifically to help give a full snapshot of the total costs and what the kind of future holds. I'll just say from my vantage point, and I've been saying this since before I was the Finance Committee Chair, it does oftentimes feel like we are making switches frequently with some of these software, hiring consultants and contractors frequently, and it feels like it costs a lot of money and a lot more money than I would guess from time to time. That's why I think a memo like this is helpful. As you see at the very front of the memo, the city was notified in 2022 that support for the on-premise UKG Chrono solution would be discontinued. We could not have predicted that. It's software that just, the developer just decided was not going to be in use anymore, and we had to develop a backup plan, adjustments, et cetera. So that's what you see here over the next three. I hope this memo is helpful for people. It certainly is for me, and I want to I want to thank the Budget Director for that and everyone else who worked on it. But I'll open up questions right now related to 474. But if your question bleeds into 475 or 476, I'm fine with that too. And I would also offer the Deputy Mayor, the HR, Dr. Nichols, if anybody wants to make a comment, you're more than welcome to.
Yep, I think just to say, Chair Gruber, that really what we're doing here is a combination of replacing systems that are at end of life, leveraging the Workday platform that we already have more fully, and by virtue of replacing one of the end-of-life systems with the UKG telestaff solution for our public safety units, we'll have them better integrated into our overall HR and payroll system to be able to facilitate better scheduling, resource tracking, that sort of thing. You'll also see that the Workday contract is extended, not only to continue to be doing the things we're doing with them with the cloud-based solution, also to contemplate these additional modules, and kind of same with Cognizant in Intro 476. So Cognizant for some time has provided system support related to our HRIS system. In this case, in the year where you see the higher dollar amount, that's also to provide implementation services in that first year. So very sensitive to your comment in a positive way about, you know, that sometimes it does feel like there have been frequent changes. I think here, the hope would be is that what we're doing will serve us well for a number of years to come, up to and until we get to the point where these things that we're implementing now reach their end of life, so.
Any questions? If not, I'll take a motion on 474.
I'll move it.
Second.
It's been moved. I guess I didn't read it now that I say it. Introduction number 474 is authorizing an agreement with Human Resource Time Management LLC. We've gone through discussion. I'll just take a motion in a second again, just in case.
Move it.
Moved.
Second.
Seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Instruct number 475, authorizing a mandatory agreement related to human resource management and payroll. Any further questions, comments, or concerns? Councilmember Martin?
So I think this is a really creative solution to recruiting employees for the city. I do have a few questions. Can you clarify, when you say job slots, can you describe what it means in this context?
Councilmember Martin, are you asking about the LinkedIn? That's 477.
Oh, okay, I typed in the wrong face. Sorry about that.
I need a motion on 475.
Move it.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? The motion carries. Instruct number 476, authorizing a mandatory agreement for ongoing optimization support for the city's payroll and personnel software solution. Any questions, comments, or concerns?
Move it.
It's been moved.
Second.
Seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. And now, instruct number 477, authorizing an agreement for talent acquisition and recruitment software services. Councilmember Martin?
Yes, so job slots. Could you clarify what it means in this context?
So I'm gonna start, and then I'm gonna turn it over to Madison McNiff, who initiated this pilot, and it worked very well. I think you all received a one-pager about the eight-month pilot that we did. But it means that we can take three positions and basically post them on LinkedIn and have a very more communicative process with people who are interested. We have more access to them. We can have conversations with them, whether, instead of just posting something and hoping for the best. I'll put it that way. But I'm gonna let Madison, if you would speak to it as well.
Yeah, hi, hello. So job slots are essentially, you can think of them like parking spots. So when we have a position that we want to advertise on LinkedIn, we can put it in there, and then we can have up to three at a time, take them out when we have sufficiently recruited on it. LinkedIn uses their internal sort of AI to make sure that the advertisements that we use go to people who are either actively looking for roles, or maybe they've clicked on it, they haven't said that they're actively looking, but they've clicked on a job ad sometime in the last couple of weeks. So LinkedIn thinks maybe they're interested in this. So they get advertised out to different people as well.
Very cool. And once, let's say, one job is filled, you can just fill in the, okay, great. Yeah, that answers, oh, finally. So what metrics do you use to measure the success of the program? I saw you listed some of the programs which have been filled, which is really important. Are there other determinants you use to measure the success?
Yeah, there, so there are many different metrics that LinkedIn offers. So what I had really used during the course of our eight-month pilot were metrics to help us see which ones are more successful than others. So we definitely had positions that, you know, different groups of professionals don't use necessarily as much. So that kind of helped us isolate, okay, we've had a lot of success and or we've gotten a lot of feedback in IT roles. We've gotten a lot of people who have responded to messages for more manager or leadership-based positions. So we can look at, we can look at people who click on the ads, the people who start the, start an application but don't complete an application, people who complete an application, you can see, you know, what companies they come from, what leadership levels they come from. If I'm also recruiting on a job, which the recruiter seat itself is for, I can see, you know, of the 50 messages I sent, how many of them are opened, how many people responded, how many people denied. So that can kind of help help lead the way that I recruit on different positions as well.
Great, thank you.
Yeah.
Any further, oh, Council President had a question?
Yes, thank you, Chair Gruber. Just with respect to the eight-month pilot, it sounds like it was highly successful for us to to continue and move forward. In terms of how the administration feels this has been helpful, did we see a significant speedup in replacing potential candidates that we're looking for, well, potential roles? And then the second question is related to the no RFP justification. It references in the no RFP justification that the city's chief equity officer position was recruited under the pilot. And I'm interested in understanding what types of roles the one-year commitment to this will be focused on. Is it going to be mostly senior-level positions like the chief equity officer, or are we looking to also look at smaller positions that we have vacancies for?
Yeah, thanks for that, Council President. I'll let Dr. Nichols take the second part of your question. I will just say, as a as a hiring manager or co-hiring manager, along with the mayor, for the chief data officer and director of project management, it felt like a much quicker process. And I will also say that in terms of the quality of the candidates that came through, the depth and breadth of skillsets, it made the decisions more difficult, which is what I think we ultimately want to have to make sure that we're attracting the best talent here to the city. So, Dr. Nichols, you want to take the second part?
Thank you, President Melendez. So I would say middle management and up, and also positions that we learn either through the metrics or we've learned from past experience that are hard to fill. We would use LinkedIn in those capacities to try and help us to get in contact with more people who have the backgrounds that we're looking for.
Great, thank you.
Any further questions? If not, I'll take a motion on 477.
Move it.
Second.
Seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Instruct number 478, where my 478 is a bond ordinance to the city of Rochester, New York, authorizing the issuance of $300,000 bonds of said city to finance the City Market Capital Art Project. Just a question, I appreciate the introductory, you give a lot of context as to the process, showed some nice pictures. Looks great. The one thing, I'm not, maybe I missed it, maybe it was in there. What's the timeline?
Timeline is, we've identified this person. Once we get them in, we'd like to have it up and done by fall, late fall of next year. Our goal would be to have it up to kind of kick off our 2026 celebration of the City Mark.
Would it require any like substantial shutdown of the bridge or anything like, or anything of that nature? Do we know?
I defer to my DES counterpart.
When we do the structural installation, which should be pretty significant, we may have some short-term closures in order to do those structural installations.
Got it. So this is like, this is a heavy-duty installation. This is here to stay?
Correct.
Okay.
There were a lot of considerations as we went through this process to that point.
And I know that the Sister Cities Bridge in particular, and I'm sure, I'll direct this question to our city engineer. I know the Sister Cities Bridge in particular has been, we've tried to funnel a lot of bicycle and pedestrian traffic, especially now that it's open. This, I can't picture the scale of it, but this structure is not going to impede any of that, right?
It will not. We were very clear when we did the RFP that these clearances needed to be provided for all of our multimodal use. It's, we are leaving it very open at the base so that there's not hiding places, and there's a lot of room to move, snow removal, all of the things, and just really going with a very vertical structure. So a lot of the mass will be upwards of 20 to 25 feet up in the air.
Oh, wow.
I would just love to add that we also need to get a small snowplow around it.
A small what, sorry?
Snowplow, sidewalk plow.
Yeah, I did not realize from the picture, maybe I should have, that it was, that the mass was that high up in the air. So this is going to be big and visible from pretty far away. Cool. Any further questions on 478? Councilmember Martin?
Yeah, so looking at the jury, I noticed there weren't the inclusion of youth voices with something like this that's going to be in the city for a while. Can you talk about strategies to include young people in future art projects?
Well, we actually have 22-year-old on the, I think she's 22 or 23 on the committee. We did make sure to engage, it's an 11-person team. And so we did work, we had a couple of 20-year-olds, but one of them on my team, who is, and we chose her specifically for that perspective.
That's great. I should have been more specific, like high schoolers, middle schoolers, people who, so, that would just be one suggestion I had. Other question, could you provide an itemized breakdown of how it got to 590,000? And that has to be in writing, of course. I don't expect that.
Yep.
Any further questions? If not, I'll take a motion on 478. It's been moved.
Second.
And seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Instruct number 479, authorizing an agreement for the City Market Capital Art Project. Any further questions, comments, or concerns on this matter? If not, I'll take a motion.
Move it.
It's been moved.
Second.
Seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Instruct number 480, authorizing the cancellation or refund of erroneous taxes and charges. Any questions or comments or concerns here? Councilmember Martin?
So this is a general question. When we get to the point where there is a submission asking council to approve cancellation of the taxes, like what is the process? Is it generally people who are impacted affirmatively drawing attention to it? Or does the administration tend to catch those errors or? Or does the administration tend to catch those errors, or is it like a mix of both?
It's a combination of both.
Okay, good. And I think this one is spur law. In one of the requests, it had to do with a settlement agreement. And I saw that that case was initiated, initiated sometime in May 2023. I'm just wondering, so it's like, it's been over a year and there is an agreement that council would, like, there's an agreement that these taxes would be canceled as part of the settlement? And the settlement has already been entered?
I'm happy to talk to you offline about that, council member. And if you, if you want to send to me the, the portion that you're talking about and we can have a conversation.
That's helpful, thank you.
Any further questions on this matter? If not, I'll take a motion.
Move it.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carries. Introductory number four eighty-one, authorizing an agreement with Empire Justice Center. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Councilmember Martin?
So what is the $20,000 amount based on? And how many participants do you anticipate would receive services based on this amount?
Thanks for that question. We'll get back to you in writing.
Thank you.
Any further questions on forty-one?
Comment on this one?
Council President, followed by Councilmember Patterson.
Yes, I just want to say that the cash program provides such vital services in the community. So many of our residents take advantage of the services and they're right at the public library downtown. And specifically, I think, as we look to the future and, and some of the changes that we anticipate at the federal level, ensuring that people understand what those changes are and having some, some tax support during tax season is going to be critical to the needs. So I'm, I'm very supportive of this effort. Thank you.
Yep, thanks for those comments. You know, this is a program that has long served our community well. It's one the mayor feels strongly about and echo those sentiments.
Councilmember Patterson?
I just wanted to echo the support that Council President just shared for the cash program. I believe this program's been running for over thirty years in our program. It's been tremendous. A long, long time ago, I was a volunteer in the program. And, you know, we did everything with pencil and pen back then and calculators, scary. But it really is transformative for folks when you realize that the vast majority of our residents have a very simple and easy tax return. They don't own any property, you know, they might not have any kids, and so it's just bang, bang, bang. It's literally dollars in their pocket when you can go somewhere and get your taxes done for free. And you can actually sit with someone who has no fiduciary interest in trying to get anything from you, just trying to get your stuff right and get your stuff in. So this is a wonderful program. I'm happy that we're supporting it and I'm hoping that we continue to do so.
With that, I'll take a motion on four eighty-one.
I'm second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? The motion carries. Introductory number four eighty-four, amending the twenty-four dash twenty-five budget, then into the relocation of the police accountability board offices. First of all, I'm gonna hold this matter. It just came to us today and just want to make sure we all have time to, to digest it. I will ask the council president to just make a comment about it if you'd like to. But first, I just want to ask a question, and I don't actually know if it's the administration, council president, corporation council. How on earth do we get a grant issued from the state in 2021 and don't receive the dollars until the end of 2024?
You would have to ask the state that.
So there was no, there was no delay on our behalf?
No, correct. It took quite a while, probably about two years, for the actual grant document to be prepared and then for us to act on it and actually file expenses to be reimbursed.
And again, not sure who directed this question explicitly, but these dollars came from Senator Brooke explicitly. And I just want to make sure that someone can confirm to me that she was notified along the way that the money that she had delivered to us took two and a half years to get here? Has anyone been in touch with her about this?
Councilmember Gruber, I'm not, I'm not aware of that. Certainly, that could be an action item from this conversation. I, I can say that standard practice, unfortunately, when it comes to the state and you may deal with this in your other hats, is that it takes, unfortunately, way too long for some of the resources to reach the community.
I, it does, I, I do experience it all the time. And typically, when that happens, I will talk to the legislator who, who is behind it and ask them to help push it through as hard and as fast as they can. Because waiting two and a half years for dollars of this magnitude is simply not fair. We spend it, we don't get it back, we don't know if it's ever gonna come. And I'm not blaming the senator whatsoever here. I'm, I'm actually quite the opposite. I'm asking us to use her, or in this case, any state or federal legislator who's bringing us money. If we're experiencing such a delay, let's make sure we're bringing them to the table to try to help us. That's my, my only real ask. That's just, that's an amazing amount of time to wait for this amount of money. President Melendez, any, any comments you want to make about this?
Yes, I appreciate holding the item. We just really wrapped up the transmittal and everything yesterday, so I apologize for the, you know, getting this in so last-minute as a tweener. With that being said, I do want to send all of council the information that we have at this point in terms of the construction process. There's been several meetings that has occurred between the PAB staff, namely the executive director and the director of operations at the PAB and a few others that have walked through the space, as well as been involved in the A and E process, making sure that we're accounting for the needs of the, the PAB staff. And so, so that will be represented in the drawings that we'll share with all of council, as well as the breakdown of the financials of what we anticipate, and subject to change, of course, anticipate the cost to be for the renovation. In the cost of the renovation, there will also be some furniture that will be required at some point in the project, which is not where we're gonna focus right now. The focus is on the actual construction with this $500,000 grant at this point in time.
Councilmember Monroe, followed by Councilmember Martin.
I just have a question about that original grant. Was that specific to the PAB or was it a more general grant?
Nope, it was specific to the PAB. I believe the language used was "support to develop a robust investigatory process." And so when we claimed the expenses against that, we used some of the original expenses in setting up the PAB.
Thank you.
Councilmember Martin?
So, could you send us that specific language you just cited from the legislative ad?
Sure, I can send the actual grant agreement, which does, it's not very detailed, but it does have a little bit of language.
Okay, that's, that's helpful. And in the transmittal, it said after a comprehensive review was done, but doesn't name, like, so, who from council or council staff was involved in this comprehensive review and who from the administration was involved? Could you provide some transparency around that?
Can you clarify, councilmember, comprehensive review of what?
Yeah, so in the transmittal, it says after a comprehensive review of future locations, it was determined that the PAB would, sorry, it's in the third paragraph at the beginning. It just says the comprehensive review was done, but doesn't provide any insight onto, like, who, who was involved from our side? You mentioned the ED and director of operations from the PAB side, but I think it's important to understand, like, who was involved in such a big decision?
Sure. All, all of that, we will follow up in, in writing as far as attendees to some of those meetings when that process was underway.
And any notes would be helpful, just to get insight onto, like, how this decision was made, understanding the timeline and how we got here. Other questions, is this decision supported by the police accountability board? Not the agency, but, you know, the unpaid volunteer community board.
To my understanding, in conversations with the chair, I have not talked and spoken to the full board, but in conversations with the chair, that they've had discussions around this space. Encourage you to follow up on, on any of that, certainly.
Yeah, I, I ask because it's, to my understanding, there may be some issue with, with the move. So I'm just trying to understand all the pieces. I haven't been involved at all. So just want to understand what's going on, also respect the board members and make sure we're all on the same page. Other questions, is the PAB, so right now they have around thirty staff, fully staffed. They may be at forty or fifty and they may grow, or they may not. But if they were to grow, does this building provide enough space to allow them to grow?
I think in the, once you receive the design of it and the layout, you'll, you'll see that they really built for what they think they need. That being said, you know, there, there is limitation to how much space there is in that building at 57 St. Paul Street. So I think once you review the design, you, you'll be able to ask further questions around that before we vote on it.
Absolutely. And last question, so the anticipated cost of this move is around $1 million. And I'm wondering if there's any, or maybe there has been, but again, I don't know. Has there been consideration of purchasing a standalone, a standalone building and renovating that building to allow for space to grow? And, like, what, I, I guess maybe the information you share will provide insight, but I'd be curious to see what other possible options were looked at, including a standalone building for the PAB that may fit within this budget. I know other concerns that have come up is they may be split on different floors. And I don't know, maybe it's gonna be alleviated, so I think that's it.
Can I, can I make a comment too? At the moment, our annual rent that we're paying at the Gannett space is $355,000 per year. So we look at this as, there's a three-year payback on this, once we get them over there.
Absolutely. And, yes, so, so that's very helpful. I'm not just opposed to, I'm, I'm just trying to see the whole plan, like, how did we, like, show the work, how did we get here? So I'm interested and I, and I think that would happen. Last, last question, so the anticipation is that the $500,000 would be used on renovations, but you mentioned that you have, you're also planning on using that to be reimbursed for some of the services that PAB has utilized?
So I, I think, Budget Director, in answering this one, I can start and you can clarify for me, because I, I think you're gonna have to clean me up. So the services that were already rendered in 2022 and 23, those were recognized services that were billed by the city of Rochester. This $500,000 that has come to the city, two and a half years later, is unrecognized revenue at this point in 2024. So this is services we already paid for, per se, but now we have an additional $500,000 in this year's budget because the money came now. Is that accurate?
Absolutely, correct.
Got it. So, so the plan is to use, so you've already taken care of the services that were already rendered and the goal is to use this for the renovation? That's really helpful, thank you.
Final question from me, unless there's, I don't see any others. And this is actually for the city engineer. So I know that we're doing, in our, yesterday in PPW, we were doing some work to the Loretta Scott Building. Does this new pot of money and ability to maybe do some more renovation work there, is that, is that helpful from a timing perspective? Is that, does that make some of what you've already started to plan more difficult?
I, I, I'm sorry, can you, I'm a little, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm a little confused.
How does this $500,000 interact with what we're already, was already underway at the Scott Building?
Okay, very, thank you very much. This will only enhance the facility. So we have a lot of needs in that facility because it is a historic structure. So everything that we're doing with this move will benefit not only PAB, but the structure itself for any of its future uses.
Great, thank you. Okay, with no further questions, I'm gonna hold four eighty-four and we're gonna move on to introductory number four eighty-five. A resolution establishing the maximum number of commissioner of deeds. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Councilmember Martin?
Just generally, about how many applications are we seeing? I appreciate that it's being increased.
Clerk Washington, you want to answer that?
I believe in the high years, typically under 250, so that's why we still have the maximum there.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
I'll take a motion on four eighty-five. It's been moved.
Second.
Seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passes. And with that, the Budget, Finance, and Governance Committee stands adjourned.
Okay. All right, we're gonna move right into our Public Safety Committee. First of all, before we get started, I just want to say happy holidays to each and every one of you. I pray that you all had a wonderful Thanksgiving and I'm praying that you have an amazing Christmas and New Year's as well. Before we get going, we typically have a presentation. We do not have any presentations to come before the Public Safety Committee. Hopefully, all of the committee, all of the council members have received your updates from Public Safety. I believe those went out today, or yesterday, if I'm not mistaken. And, but I do want to draw your attention to a couple of things. One, I am, many of you may not know this, but I am the chaplain for the retired firefighters and they have a Christmas party every year, and today was their Christmas party. And at that Christmas party, I sat the Red Fidelis Brook House, it's a luncheon. One of the opportunities, I see the chief coming in now, so it's good timing, chief, is that we, I, I have the, one of my duties is to read the names of the deceased firefighters from last, from, from year to year. We have about 150 firefighters attend that. Two, could really expand to more, but the room only holds 150. So every year, we see at least 10 to 15 names on that list, right? And so I just wanted to take a moment of silence because just very recently, not only do we have 16 names on that list today, but very recently, we had a, a loss of Lieutenant David Sidorinko. And recently, and his funeral was on Sunday. So I wanted to just take the opportunity, and his name was also listed on that list as a retired, RFD active member that has passed. And so I wanted to just offer, if you take a moment of silence, just to recognize all of those individuals that serve, our civil servants and various ones that we've lost throughout this, this year. Thank you. Thank you. And Chief Napolatano. I got it, right, chief? I say that because it's an inside joke, his name got butchered at the luncheon today. But I'm so grateful. And I also want to draw your attention before we start, we only have two things on the, on the items, so we'll be very brief. So I'm taking this opportunity to draw your attention to the, many of you know that we, last couple of months ago, we had our Rock Against Gun Violence Coalition Youth Conference. And it's a very successful conference. Part of that conference is we're doing five $1,000 scholarships to Rochester City School District students, seventeen and older, who are either been accepted to a college or in their first year of going to college. We've extended that, that application to February. We were gonna do the distribution of those five $1,000 scholarships at our December meeting, but we're getting, the applications are coming in kind of slow. So we're asking our colleagues to, you know, use the information that's being sent out by DASSI and, and Aiden to please use those, that flyer, if you will. It's now been posted on the local radio station and we're, we're expecting to get a lot more applications in. But we've extended it to February, so we look to do the extension or the presenting, the presenting of those one, those five $1,000 scholarships to those five students in the February meeting. So I just wanted you to be aware that that timeline deadline has been extended and looking for your help to extend that to your constituents and those who may qualify. There are three ways that they can show their work. They can do it through an essay, because we know our students operate differently. They can do it through a piece of art, or they can do it through something audio or video. That way, we can touch people in the different forms that they may be able to present themselves. And it's just all about solutions to gun violence. So that's what it's all about. And we're just trying to, we're using our member items to, I'm using my member items rather, to, to do that. So I'm looking for your help on that. Thank you. At this time, I'll ask the Public Safety Committee to come to order and I'll ask the clerk, Madam Clerk, would you please call the road?
Sure. Councilmember Lightfoot?
Presenting, ma'am.
Councilmember Gruber?
Here.
Councilmember Lupien? Councilmember Martin?
Councilmember Martin?
Here.
Councilmember Monroe?
Here.
Councilmember Patterson?
Here.
Councilmember Smith is excused. Vice President Harris?
Here.
President Melendez?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Introduction number four eighty-two, authorizing agreement related to two thousand twenty-four State Law Enforcement Terrorism Prevention Program Grant. Any questions, comments, and/or concerns? If not, I entertain a motion.
Move it.
It's been moved?
Second.
It's been seconded. Now we vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Introduction number four eighty-three, authorizing an intimsible agreement in amending the two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five budget for the two thousand twenty-five Stop DWI and High Visibility Engagement Campaign Program. Any questions, comments, and/or concerns? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Move it.
It's been moved?
Second.
It's been seconded. Now we vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Chair Lightfoot?
Yes, sir.
I have a question related to the public safety updates.
Councilman, President Melendez?
This is for Chief Smith. Regarding the recruitment and retention updates, there's a note that recruit class seventy-six began on Monday, December second, and we have ten candidates. Two-part question, and don't have to answer it now, but it could be in writing, too, whatever you prefer. So first question is, how does that compare, ten candidates versus what a typical recruit class is? And the second question is, and this may have to be in writing, how does this compare to our retirements for this year? Thank you.
Councilmember Martin?
Yeah, so I saw in the news recently that a man who lost his eye after he was shot by a purple ball by RPD was awarded a settlement of one point seven five million. So I'm interested in where these funds are coming from. Is it coming out of RPD's budget? Is it coming out of, like, how is this money being paid out?
It comes out of our self-insurance reserve, and we can work with budget to help you understand how that works.
Yes, that would be helpful. I'd be interested in having a meeting even to better understand the impact, how, how much has been utilized over the years, and so that would be great to schedule. Thank you.
Sure.
Any other comments? If there are no other comments and no further business, the Public Safety Committee is adjourned. Have a good night, everybody.